This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I now call to order this meeting of the Borough of Edgewood for this Monday, January 19th, 2021. Mr. Zohorecheck, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bright. Mr. Fuller.
Here.
Mr. Love.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Dr. Petrola.
Here.
Ms. Janey.
Here.
And Mr. Wainwright, who will be absent. Okay, and it's like Tim is here, our junior councilperson said he will not be here tonight, and the mayor also said he will not be here tonight.
Let the record reflect that. All right, we're going to be skipping over the Pledge of Allegiance tonight and moving directly to items from the floor. Mr. Zohorecheck, do we have any comments submitted before tonight's meeting?
I did not receive any public comment.
There being none, is there anybody present in our meeting who I'm not accounting for here who has something to say? There being none, we will be moving right along to the approval of minutes and for the approval of minutes from December 21st, 2020. Mr. Fuller.
Thank you. I move to approve the minutes of December 21st, 2020, regular meeting.
Second.
There being a second, Mr. Zohorecheck, call the roll.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Aye.
Dr. Petrola.
Aye.
Ms. Janey.
Aye.
And, oop, that's all.
And with that, the motion passes. And to read the minutes of January 4th, 2021's council meeting, Mr. Love.
I approve, I move to approve the minutes of January 4th, 2021, regular meeting.
Second.
Oh, would you please call the roll, Mr. Zohorecheck? Thank you.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Aye.
Dr. Petrola.
Aye.
And Ms. Janey.
Aye.
And just like that, the motion passes. And now for the authorization to pay bills, would you please, Mr. Fuller?
Thank you. I move to authorize the payment of bills for goods and services received by the Borough, having been approved and reviewed by General Government Committee from the general fund in the amount of $43,111.82, and from the sewer fund in the amount of $83.20, for a total of $43,197.2.
Do, before we take a second, Mr. Fuller, you have any comments on this week's billists?
I think I'll review, I'll reserve them for the General Committee report.
Sounds good to me. That being the case, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Zohorecheck's on his phone, so I'm going to call the roll. Can I do that?
If you know who's here.
I have to do it in exact order.
Okay, I'm doing it.
It's okay with me.
All right, sounds good. I'm just going to go with what I see on my screen here. Ms. Janey.
Aye.
Mr. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Caller one, who I think is Dr. Petrola.
Aye.
And just like that, the motion passes.
Where were you going to go?
Am I wrong?
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Is that higher than?
Sorry, guys. Mr. Bright was having technical difficulties. I understand we're calling the roll on the authorization of the bill payment?
We did, and everyone voted to pay the bills.
That's a good thing.
Except for Ryan. Ryan didn't vote.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes. I thought about it. Oh, yes.
We appreciate that.
We've got the best General Government Committee in the business, I tell you. All right, if that's all notated, let's move along to committee reports. And for tonight's General Government report, Mr. Fuller.
Thank you. General Government met to review the bills and to discuss whether we should lower the pricing on some of the vehicles that were currently sitting or resting in the Borough back lot. And there was a piece of legislation that we might want to consider in decriminalization, and that's about it. The bill run was relatively small. The main one was the MEIT payment, which accounted for almost half of the money that was spent by the Borough this month.
We also talked a bit about the cable franchise agreement.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
We're going to have time to talk about that a little more. If anybody has questions about it, why don't we hold it until later in our agenda? Mr. Fuller, anything else?
I think that covers it, unless I forgot something.
All right, let's move along to the police report, and the mayor is not with us. And I noticed we have another caller. Has Mr. Bright joined us?
Yes.
Will the record reflect that Councilman Bright is here?
Noted.
And Mr. Zohorecheck, would you be kind enough to do the police report?
Thank you. So, the, everything in the police department is functioning smoothly. We're currently investigating methods to obtain the COVID vaccine. There's still a lot of confusion surrounding exactly how that process is going to roll out for the 1B category, mainly because we're still trying to get through the 1A category. Rest assured, we are working every day to figure that one out.
Mr. Zohorecheck, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do our first responders and police do not qualify in the 1A, or where, there's some question of that?
To the best of my understanding, under the state's inoculation guidelines, they are categorized as 1B.
Thank you.
No problem. They, so we also took receipt, or I'm sorry, delivery of the new police vehicle, the new SUV. So that is actually now the outfitter getting all the emblems and lights, oh, I'm sorry, the lights are already on, but the emblems put on it. So that'll be in service here very soon. And corresponding to that, you'll notice a motion on tonight's agenda to sell one of the older police vehicles that this car is replacing. Outside of that, our complement of new part-time officers is gone, are going there training right now. That appears to be going well. And otherwise, the department is healthy, everyone is working, and nothing notable to report.
Where are my body cams?
On order, probably April.
All right.
I'm going to talk to some people at the office. We might, I know there, you can get the vaccine out in like Washington hospitals and other places, but I might be able to get some of the police there to get a vaccine if they're interested. I'm going to see. I know most of my staff way to get it, like randomly get it out of nowhere, because I got it, I'm getting it through St. Clair Hospital.
It is. I appreciate that. I've had similar conversation that is almost, it's almost exactly what you just said, with Ben Reynolds, who some of you know through the voluntary fire department, but also his position at UPMC on their COVID task force. He has explained the process under which some departments, some police departments and other, you know, non-1A medical workers have gotten vaccinated. And it sounds like, yeah, it is kind of who you know. It makes you to the front of the line. So absolutely, Justin, it would be greatly appreciated if you happen to come across, we need 17.
All right. They might have to go out, they might have to go out to Washington to get it, but they should be like, you know, towards Washington Hospital, not Washington.
Yeah, well, we haven't, we have a new car, so we can get them there.
Yeah.
The process with my staff to the tune of like 54 vaccines, and we're rolling this coming week. So let's, you and I schedule some time to talk about what we can do to maybe expedite this, and maybe we can rope in Dr. Petrola. Anything else?
I got your text, Ryan, and I'm going to call that number tomorrow to see exactly what we can do. And I've gotten several other notifications, like just today, that Sergeant Casky's going to start running down, because she's been investigating this on her end as well. So, yeah, I think through that, we should either find that we've, we have a pathway for, or we've hit a brick wall.
People know who you are. All right, anything else? So are we ready to move on?
You can move on.
I think so. Now for the public safety report, double duty tonight, Mr. Fuller.
Public safety did not meet.
Light work. Moving along, Mr. Bright, the community development report, please.
Yes, community development did not meet.
No news, it's good news. Mr. Love, the public works report.
Public Works did not meet.
Ms. Janey, the community services report.
Community Services did not meet.
Dr. Petrola, I'm ready to be surprised. Please hit me with the personnel committee report.
I'm going to surprise you. We did not meet.
After the last one here, we have the pension committee. Mr. Fuller.
Pension committee did not meet.
In keeping with his colleagues. And since we no longer have any ad hoc committees listed, I think we can move past that item on the agenda as well. Did I miss something?
Connect. Do you want to hear about Connect at all?
Oh, there's Connect. I'm sorry. My bad. Yes, I do want to hear about Connect. Ms. Janey, please tell us.
So I went to a, their meeting, their, of one of their branches last week, and they just, the most interesting thing that came out of that is there's a new service called Pathway to Care and Recovery, and it's a 24-hour service where they can, where either a policeman or a relative or someone who just wants some help with their substance abuse can just go, and they, their mission is to hold their hand all the way from the process of when they come into their shop to wherever they need to go, whether it's mental health issues, whether to send them off to that path, or whether it's, you know, being, you know, they have a bed for detoxing, or a floor of beds for detoxing. So, and it's brand new, it just started. They said they sent out flyers, those flyers I sent to you guys, to the cops and the fire departments. Nobody seems to, we haven't seen it yet, nobody used it yet. And I was kind of unclear as to, one, how anybody's going to pay for this service. You know, they were kind of like, oh, yeah, it's sort of pay first fee for service. I don't know if like, if a policeman takes them in there, all of a sudden they get a big hospital bill kind of a thing. And I was also unclear, they're kind of, I mean, they're just starting, so they're just kind of looking for clients, but it seems like that kind of place is going to fill up pretty quick, and like what they're going to do when they don't have enough places to put anybody was, anyway. But it was interesting, at least somebody was trying to do that, and they are, they're coordinating with Connect and also the lead program.
If it was a good resource, do you think it would be worth our time to invite them to come and address council during public comments on one of these times?
Maybe. Yeah, maybe after bugs, yeah.
Okay, cool. But anything else?
That was, yeah, no, not really.
Thanks for going to that meeting. I'm sorry, I accidentally looked past that on the agenda. Moving right along to the Borough Solicitors Report, Mr. Barry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening. Thank you.
I just played Mr. President on TV. I'm filling in for tonight, but no problem. Thank you. Mr. Manager, a report?
Sure, thank you. So, should have been delivered to your door tonight, copies of the latest statement of financial interest forms, along with photocopies of last year's forms, if you submitted them to me in the office and I had them on file. If you filed online, then hopefully you've saved a copy of it. You can complete those, bring them by the office, mail them in, or you can file online. I just wanted to make you aware that those are now available. I believe the deadline for filing those is, I want to say it's May, but it's listed right on the first page of SOFI. I included two copies of the form, just in case you should make a mistake on the first. And don't worry, I have plenty more too where those came from. As I mentioned earlier, the Borough has received both of its vehicles, the new public works dump truck, and a, the new police interceptor arrived within several days of one another. So the dump truck was already in action this weekend, and the police vehicle is just in its final stage of outfitting. So that'll be on the road very shortly, and there are corresponding motions to sell the previous versions of those pieces of equipment on tonight's agenda, rather to advertise for sale, not to sell, but to advertise for sale, those pieces of equipment. I had the, a meeting today with the Tricog Land Bank representative, their attorney, and an agent from the Land Bank itself. He's the sort of in-house construction expert at 147 Washington, which is the heart residence, the structure that we're trying to move through conservatorship. The representative from the Land Bank was able to photograph and document the condition of the house that will be used in our brief that'll be filed on behalf of the Borough by the Land Bank at the conservatorship hearing, which hopefully that brief will be prepared by the first or second week of February. And once that is filed, a trial date should follow, you know, usually, I think the law says, once the brief is filed, a trial has to be scheduled within, I believe it's 60 days. So hopefully we should have a first hearing date sometime in early spring. I'll keep you guys updated on that one. Next, moving right along, this past week, the, the installers were in council chambers installing the new audio video solution, which you guys were kind enough to budget for, that will allow us to record our meetings and also post them online when we actually have meetings back in the building. So it'll be a nice test period that we'll have there. But the system itself is actually, it's very nice. The camera picks up the entire room, and the microphones are very sensitive. Just keep that in mind. Next, our internal audit will start next week. And then lastly, on the agenda for the, I'm sorry, two more things. One is the appointment of another zoning officer. Unfortunately, the guy that we appointed a couple of weeks ago actually quit DIU altogether to take a job at a municipality that he used to work, was rather unexpected departure. So we have a substitute for right now. His name is Dave Naylor. He needs to be named our zoning officer until the person he's training, which I think he just started training him today, can fill in more permanently as our full-time building inspector. So a little bit of, kind of change in personnel, shifting in personnel on BIU's side. But hopefully this gentleman that Dave is bringing on board will stick with us for a little bit longer than Pat did. I think the way that Pat put it was, he was commuting from somewhere up around Butler, all the way out to counties or communities in Westmoreland County. And also, it was offered a much nicer job in a community he used to work in, so he, the decision was pretty obvious for him. Then, I'm sorry?
Who said nicer?
True. So lastly, also on tonight's agenda is a motion to execute an agreement between the Borough and Cohen Law Group for, to commence negotiations on behalf of the Borough for the Comcast franchise agreement. Very similar, exactly similar, except replace the name with Verizon with Comcast. This would be another, hopefully, five-year deal with Comcast Cable Company for revenues, percentage of gross revenues for the utilization of our rights of way to distribute their cable products. The key thing to point out, similar to the Verizon agreement, this agreement is going to be done through the Turtle Creek Cog, going in with multiple municipalities. Right now, we're sitting between three and four committed communities. That's important because the pricing structure that Cohen offers us varies based on the number of communities to join in. The number between three and four is breaking point on the cost associated with the fee, or with the, with negotiations. Either way, we would be under budget for the whole process. Roughly speaking, it would be either $90, $100 if we were to get four communities, and if we get three communities, it's $9,500. It's a flat fee regardless of how long the agreement negotiations may take, and, you know, what is involved in them. So, you know, Cohen obviously wins if negotiations conclude in 30 days. The Borough wins if negotiations conclude in, you know, three years. Now, that being said, also included in this agreement is a, is an audit of prior financials from Comcast Cable. That will go back, that will span at least the last three years of remittances to the Borough. And I think in the long summary that I sent you guys, Cohen has found at least 60 to 70% of the time, I believe, there are historically underpayments to communities. So oftentimes, the cable company is actually owing the Borough money even before they get into negotiating the next agreement. So we'll start with the franchise fee audit, the prior remittances, and then move into the negotiations once that audit is completed. So that's, that's the whole thing in a nutshell. Does anyone have any questions about what might be involved, what else, you know, could be involved in that?
I do have one quick point about the BIU.
Hmm, yes.
Talking to somebody in Bellevue today, and they mentioned that they were trying to find a replacement for BIU because they've been getting a lot of complaints about them. I don't know if that's feasible, but that's what they were trying to do.
I'm not surprised about that. I know, I know Cindy Vaughn, she's now the manager out at Bellevue. She's on our civil service commission. I've known her even before then. I can talk to her, because I, I said to myself with this whole, you know, shakeup with, with Pat happened, I just kind of said to myself, hmm, something tells me I might be doing an RFP for a new building services provider in this year. And we'll see how this, we'll see how long this other guy lasts. Yeah, I mean, I know, historically, you know, you're kind of, you know, you're picking between, you know, who's affordable and, you know, the services that you need. We're, we're in a position where, you know, we still need commercial plan review because of town center. You know, we still need CBOs, certified building officials, because we have to do occupancy inspections. You know, the small things like residential building permits, it's nice having office hours. You know, we don't, it doesn't justify having a full-time employee, the amount of work just isn't there to justify a full-time employee. So it's kind of where you end up with these third-party contractors that we use. And unfortunately, from what I hear, they're all essentially the same car rental company. They give you, they give you a vehicle, you can drive it, and then, you know, you pay for it, or you return. It's, I want to see how this works out with, you know, with our new guy. I will let you know if we need to start exploring other providers. That's, that's how I feel about that. I'm not in any ways married to BIU. There are other companies out there that can do this. And, yeah, I'll give this new guy a shot and see how he works. But I'm coming to in a couple of months with an announcement. Don't be surprised.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Zohorecheck?
No, I believe that covers all of my report for this evening.
Good stuff. Anybody have a question, comment, or concern before we move along? Hearing none, we will move along to new business. Any new business, Mr. Zohorecheck?
No, I don't believe so. No, is there anything I left out of General Government? No, just an email to send out. That's it.
All right, good stuff. Moving along to committee actions. Leading on. Yes.
Hold on. You see the new light on Maple and Swiftdale? It's pretty nice, isn't it?
Very nice.
Thank you, Dr. Petrola. Yes, we are building that one brick at a time. The last step in all of that is to finish the sidewalk on the train station side of the avenue there. And incredibly enough, Duquesne Light still has not actually come to transfer the service, the service that we're running off of right now was installed by our contractor. So at some point, that'll have to get resolved. But, yeah, the last step in everything there is to just, is to simply do the concrete work on train station side, and then we can call for an inspection, repent on, or through any issues that they may have, and have a brand-new, beautiful light.
And it is a marvelous light, Dr. Petrola. You did really great work bringing that into a reality, and you should be proud every time you drive through that light.
I'm a little mildly, mildly happy about it. Mildly happy, I have to say.
When I'm not waiting to like, straight or make the right there, and no one knows what to do going through the intersection, I'm very happy. So I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Well, we, we did turn on the radar sensors, so you may notice that the activation is a lot faster. You won't have to sit there and run through, let the light run through its continuous cycle like it was for a few months. The radar signals are now active, and they will, they will turn the lights rather quickly.
Attaboy.
Very good.
All right, moving right along.
21st century stuff.
The Comcast franchise agreement renewal engagement letter, Mr. Fuller.
Thank you. I move to engage the Cohen Law Group for cable franchise renewal negotiations and a franchise for audit of Comcast of Pennsylvania.
Go ahead, here a second.
Second.
Mr. Zohorecheck, so Zohorecheck, will you call the roll, please?
I want to say something, Rob, and just my two cents. I think the most important part of this engagement is the audit. So, you know, hopefully, they will do that for us, and we'll get something out of it. That's all I have to say.
I couldn't agree with you more, Tim. We didn't do, we, we, we got a review of fees paid with Verizon, but Verizon was even unwilling to cooperate with an audit. It's my understanding that Comcast is not as reluctant, so we, we should actually have a full engaged, a full, fully engaged audit through this process.
Anybody have any questions about what that means, or what we're auditing here before we vote? Oh, okay, good stuff. Mr. Zohorecheck, you call the roll, please?
Not a problem. Mr. Bright.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Aye.
Dr. Petrola.
Aye.
And Ms. Janey.
Aye.
And just like that, the motion passes. And now for appointing ALON delegate and an alternate delegate, Councilwoman Janey.
I move to appoint the following individuals as delegates, all again, need of municipal county, Jack Wilson, delegate, John Wainwright, alternate delegate.
Second.
There being a second.
Good to not be here.
But.
That's what I get for not being here.
There being a second, and no objection. No questions. Call her.
Absolutely. Mr. Bright.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Aye.
Dr. Petrola.
Aye.
Ms. Janey.
Aye.
And just like that, the motion passes. And now to appoint a Turtle Creek Valley Council of Government delegate and alternate delegate, Dr. Petrola.
I move to appoint the following individuals as delegates to the Turtle Creek Valley Council of Governments, Jack Wilson, delegate, Tara Janey, alternate delegate.
Whether you like it or not, I second the motion. Whether you like it or not, I second the motion. Uh, Mrs. Zhorcheck, call the roll.
Mr. Bright?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Aye.
Dr. Petrola?
Aye.
And Ms. Yanni?
Aye.
And just like that, it becomes the way it is. And now to sell a two thousand and seven Ford F-550 dump truck, uh, Mr. Love?
I move to advertise for sale a two thousand and seven Ford F-550 dump truck with a minimum sale price of fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
Second.
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Manager, run the uh roll call.
Mr. Bright?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Aye.
Dr. Petrola?
Aye.
And Ms. Yanni?
Aye.
Okay, and with that, the motion passes. And now to sell a twenty-twelve Dodge Charger, the councilman with all the speaking lines tonight, Mr. Fuller.
Thank you, Mr. Acting President. I move to advertise for sale a two thousand and twelve Dodge Charger police car with a minimum sale price of two thousand five hundred dollars American.
There's a second there. Uh, any questions, uh, especially currency-related questions before we move on? All right, Rob, the roll, please.
Mr. Bright?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Aye.
Dr. Petrola?
Aye.
Ms. Yanni?
Aye.
Okay, and just like that, that's the way it will be. Now to sell buyer's in-bed salt spreader, Mr. Bright?
Um, I move to advertise for sale a buyer's salt dog in-bed salt spreader with a minimum sale price of two thousand dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns? All right, Mr. Manager, read them off.
Mr. Bright?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Aye.
Dr. Petrola?
Aye.
And Ms. Yanni?
Aye.
So it is. Uh, now to appoint Dave Naylor, Borough Zoning Officer.
Mr. Love? Mr. Vice President, I think Tara had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ask, were those the three prices that you guys were talking about making lower?
No.
Just the fire engine.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, just curious.
And a- as long as that's up for discussion, do you want to make a motion tonight to do that, Mr. Zhorcheck?
Frankly, I'd rather wait because I'm not prepared to give you a final price.
Okay.
But thank you.
Okey-dokey, so we're going back and we're gonna appoint Dave Naylor, the Borough Zoning Officer, and I think we're gonna give that to Mr. Love.
I move to appoint Da- Dave Naylor, Borough Zoning Officer.
Second. Any questions? Mr. Manager, read them off.
Mr. Bright?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Aye.
Dr. Petrola?
Aye.
And Ms. Yanni?
Aye.
And bang goes the gavel. Uh, Resolution twenty twenty-one oh four to appoint Mr. Michael Pascal to the Shade Tree Committee. Ms. Yanni?
Want the whole thing?
Uh, I think by title only will probably suffice unless our legal counsel has issue with that.
Okay, with me.
Resolution twenty twenty-one oh four, whereas um now therefore it being resolved that Michael Pascal will be appointed to the Edgewood Borough Shade Tree Advisory Committee to a term expiring January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Good stuff. Any questions? There being a second, uh, any questions or comments? All right, Mr. Manager, engage roll call.
Mr. Bright?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Aye.
Dr. Petrola?
Aye.
Ms. Yanni?
Aye.
And a hearty congratulations to you, Mr. Pascal. Thank you for joining us tonight and for your commitment to our borough.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, moving right along, Resolution twenty twenty-one oh five to appoint Evan Burnbridge to the Shade Tree Committee. Mr. Bright?
Yeah, I move, well, to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh five to appoint Evan Burbidge to the Shade Tree Committee.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear any questions, comments, or concerns? There being none, Mr. Zhorcheck, make it so.
Mr. Bright?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Aye.
Dr. Petrola?
Aye.
And Ms. Yanni?
Aye.
And so it is. Mr. Burnbridge, thank you, uh, Burbidge, excuse me, thank you so much for your commitment to our town. And let's move on to the last item on our list here, the Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh six, so six, to appoint Tracy Kazmersky uh to the Shade Tree Committee, none other than the good Dr. Petrola.
I move to approve Borough of Edgewood Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh six to approve Tracy Kazmersky to the uh Borough Shade Tree Advisory Committee uh for a term that expires in January eighteenth of twenty twenty-four.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Do I hear a question, a comment, or a concern? There being none, Mr. Manager, the roll, please.
Mr. Bright?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Petrola?
Aye.
And Ms. Yanni?
Aye.
So it is. Uh, and unless anybody else has something to add, uh, Mr. Fuller?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
My colleague, what's that? I'll second that. All right, and I think we can just go with a voice vote here. Everyone who's in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Yes.
All those opposed, say nay. Nay, the ayes have it, I'm banging the gavel. That calls it. Thanks for joining us, guys.
Good job, Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller, have a good night.